Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the March 25th, 2014 meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called order at 6:05 PM. May we have roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Caro.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Friedman and the invocation by City Clerk, Arday Kasak. Please stand.
Why do you join in our pledge of nations' flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for this evening's invocation. March is a month when we nationally and internationally acknowledge the importance -- important role women have in all of our lives, not only here in the United States, but all over the world. One of those shining examples of womanhood and leadership in America is former First Lady and diplomat Eleanor Roosevelt, who said, quote, "We gain strength and courage and confidence by each experience in which we really stop to look fear in the face. We must do that which we think we cannot," end quote. This evening, as many people's attentions are torn away from the issues closer to home to those of places afar, we join our friends in prayers of hope and strength and courage as we help them look fear in the face. To those families who are searching for answers to the missing flight 370 of Malaysia Airlines, we pray for you and your loved ones. May you be sustained by hope of finding answers to this troubling incident and tragedy. To our friends who have families in Syria, especially in the city of Latakia and the Armenian Christian communities of Kessab, we pray for your safety as your homes and land are torn apart by violence, persecution, and war. We pray for those families who are innocent and in the crossfire, whose only desire is to be safe and secure. We pray for you. Pray that all who face fear in the face find the courage and strength to do the things that we cannot, and that time will bring peace and answers to all who suffer. We pray for this and for peace always tonight and always amen.
Okay, may we have your report?
Agenda for the March 25th, 2014 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 20, 2014, on the bulletin board outside city.
And next?
Next item on the agenda under Presentation, Appointments, 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of Tuesday, April 1st, 2014.
Mrs. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for April 1st, for the Glendale City Council Meeting, actually, let's do this the other way around, the Glendale Housing Authority Meeting, we have No Business Agenda items, which commences in the afternoon. We do have a special meeting of the Glendale Successor Agency, and that's to commence at 3:00 PM. Director of Economic Development, Second Revision to the Long Range Property Management Plan. In the evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a few consent items, Director of Public Works, Glendale Wastewater Capacity and Street Improvement Project, and this is in connection with Spec. 3490. Director of Public Works, this is regarding Arden Avenue Rehab Project, and this is in connection with Spec. 3363. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is regarding Fremont Park Tennis Court Lighting and Resurfacing Project. And lastly, we have two items under action, Director of Community Services and Parks, Palmer Park Improvement Project, and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding design of new water rates in order to correct errors in the calculation of the water rates adopted in 2012. And we will have the CIO presenting the city's new website to the community that evening. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What is next, please?
3B is a proclamation designating the month of April 2014 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and April 23, 2014, as Denim Day in Glendale.
Okay, come forth, Commissioners. Four of you? Good, only four. Okay, let me read it first. Whereas the United States Government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women in Collaboration with Peace Over Violence has declared April 23rd, 2014, as Denim Day in Los Angeles, and whereas every two minutes someone in America is sexually assaulted, approximately one out of every six American women has been the victim of an attempted or completed rape in her lifetime, and use under 18 years of age account for approximately 44 percent of all reported rapes. And whereas with proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas both Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault are serious issues in our society, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape allowing these crimes to persist and victim survivors to be revictimized. And whereas the members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women in Collaboration with Peace Over Violence to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault and what can be done to prevent it. Now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and designate April 23rd, 2014, as Denim Day in Glendale, and urge everyone to wear jeans on April 23rd to spread the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. Long one. I didn't brush.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. On behalf of myself, Denise Miller, the Chair on the Commission on the Status of Women, as well as Commissioners Kajian, Commissioner Devine, and Commissioner Weissman, we stand before you to thank you for taking the matter of the Sexual Assault Awareness Month so serious and for helping us to recognize all of the activities that we will be sponsoring. We have a lot of activities, and I've abbreviated the version of notes that I was given so that we really just address the dates, the times, and the website for our viewing audience. We have self-defense classes that we are offering. We're offering two. One is on Wednesday, April 9th, at Glendale Community College. The second is on Wednesday, April 16th, at the Glendale Police Department. Staff has advised us that both of those classes are full. We do meet as a commission in April, and we are looking very seriously at having to add a third one. So we're very pleased that we've had an overwhelming response during the month of March to these classes. Denim Day, as you announced, Mayor, will be taking place Wednesday, April 23rd. We invite the community to join us, to wear denim on that day, so that we can recognize and support rape prevention education and help to raise funds. We will also be taking part in a human trafficking panel discussion during the Week of Remembrance as part of Man's Inhumanity to Man's Events during this week in Glendale. We'll be presenting a human trafficking panel discussion that will also take place on April 23rd from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Glendale Central Library. We have a lineup of a very powerful, informed, educated, and resourceful group of people who are all frontrunners on the whole issue of human trafficking, and they will be there to help bring this issue to the forefront in our community. We also have another event with the YWCA of Glendale that is raising awareness for AB Assembly Bill 1433. That is, the CSW is cosponsoring an event with the YWCA, and it's a legislative bill that has been put forward by our Assembly Member, Mike Gatto, requiring college campuses, law enforcement to report any Part I violent crime, willful homicide, forcible rape, robbery, and aggravated assault or hate crime. On April, this event takes place on April 25th from 11:00 to 1:30. The location will follow. For any of these events, please call 818-548-2000 or email women@glendaleca.gov. Again, we'd like to thank you, and when you all see us depart right now, we're not leaving because our presentation's over. We actually have an event for Women's History Month called Misrepresentation that we are taking part in right now at the Glendale Central Library to raise the awareness of the women's representation within the media. So for anybody who's home and wants to tape council, they can come and join us at the Glendale Central Library and partake in a really great discussion with the screening of the film. And then at 8:30, we have one of the author, or one of the people who are in the film, Professor Carolyn Heldman, our guest speaker from Occidental College. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, what is next, please?
Next item at 3C is reappointment of Councilmember Laura Friedman as Glendale's representative to the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California Board of Directors.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move the reappointment of Laura Friedman as our representative to the MWD. Councilmember Friedman has done an admirable job of attending all the meetings and learning at a very steep learning curve all the intricacies of water management and water supply, of which obviously we're all very much reliant on. And it's a non-paying position as well, and I can't tell you the times that I see her rushing to make the closed-session meetings on Tuesday. Your meetings are on Tuesday, right? Rushing back, famished, not having had enough to eat, and I would very much support her reappointment. Let's not get too far, I think this was late in coming perhaps, did this reappointment slip under the radar? If it did or it didn't, let's make sure that we're up on these. And as a corollary, there are many boards and commissions that the council serves on, and I would very much like to see my colleague Commissioner, well, not Commissioner, but Councilmember Sananian, to obtain some of those exciting posts that we're all hoarding at the moment.
Exciting?
But that's a discussion for another time, but Ms. Friedman's done a great job, and in the future, let's find some space for Mr. Sananian on some of these boards and commissions.
Don't listen to him when he uses the word exciting. Second the motion.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
First, I appreciate the council's support. Being on Met Board has been very interesting and challenging, and I hope beneficial for the city to have an elected representative on that board. And in terms of Mr. Sananian, I let him know, now of course, this will be up to the pleasure of the council, but I stepped down from the Aurora Verdugo Steering Committee, which I've sat on now, this was my fifth year, and it's a group, it's a committee made up of representatives from South Pasadena, Pasadena, Burbank, Glendale, and La Cañada, Flintridge. It's a wonderful group, it deals with a lot of transportation issues and other issues, and I would hope that we would appoint Mr. Sananian if he was interested in that position.
Think about it.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, and I hope, I agree with both Councilmembers Najarian and Councilmember Friedman. I have tried to get on a couple of commissions, but due to the fact that those commissions already have representation from Glendale, they've sort of been precluded. And yeah, it'd be nice to be on a commission that doesn't meet twice a year, a little more frequently and a little more excitement, like Mr. Najarian.
I don't know if it's exciting.
It's our version of hazing. You're fresh with it.
I sat on it about...
So now you're past that, and now you're a sophomore.
I sat on it about six, eight years, so I'll tell you all about it.
Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right, next, please.
Next item, City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Friedman.
First, a few days ago, I was able to attend the reopening of the Brand Library, the Associates of the Brand Library, which is a group of which I am a member and which I encourage people to sign up for, had a fundraiser at the newly renovated library. It is spectacular. Money well spent, let me say. The place is so transformed, the main part of the library, that I didn't even, I didn't realize that there was beautiful woodwork. I had never noticed it behind all of the stuff that we had in there. It's really going to be even more the pride of the city, so congratulations to Cindy Cleary and her staff, and Public Works and whoever else had a hand in doing the renovation. Now, this Thursday morning, there is a ribbon cutting, I believe at 10:30, and the public is invited. There's also a gallery opening on Saturday night, Saturday evening, at seven or seven. At 7:00, again, the public is invited. Please come to one of those events, see the library, experience it in its glory. You'll be very proud. Secondly, or lastly, it's come to my attention, and to I think everybody in Glendale knows now, that Zinke's, the shoe repair shop that's been on Broadway forever, where many of us have gotten our shoes fixed, is closing. Wilson, sorry, on Wilson, that's right, is closing. The property's been sold, and the new owner is not renewing their lease, which is nothing that we in the city can do anything about. But what's of concern to me is particularly the sign, which is a very historic sign, very much something that identifies that part of Glendale for a lot of people. I would like to see the sign, if possible, retained on site, although I could imagine people bringing their shoes in there for five years after it's closed if that sign stays, but it's a small price to pay. Now, I've had conversations with the Historic Society, I've talked to staff about this several times, I know that there's been contact with the Museum of Neon Art. I just want to let people know that I'm on top of it as much as I can be, the Historic Society is on top of it, Museum of Neon Art has been in contact with the owners. So from many different angles, there are a lot of people working on trying to keep that sign in Glendale, so I just want the public to know that. I don't know what's going to happen with it, but I want to let staff know that I, as far as I know, that site has been surveyed and potentially eligible, the sign is potentially eligible as a historic resource. So we have to make sure that the owner knows that because it's a historic resource, it can't just be torn, you know, taken down and thrown away. So we should put them on notice right now that, you know, we need to make sure that this goes through the correct process. I also think we should do an evaluation of buildings on site. Zeke's probably, Zinke's probably not the building historic itself. I'm more concerned, actually, with the Hamburger Putt, and when that was created, and if that's something that we should look at. I know that similar little roadside hamburger stands have been moved in the past to other places within cities. If the building is historic, that might be an option, but let's, before it goes down under a bulldozer, let's make sure that everybody knows that we need to take a look at this property. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Najarian? Mr. Najarian?
I had a great meeting with the combined homeowners associations of the Riverside Rancho, Helen Coney Park Estates, and the GC3 homeowners. We had a presentation by Chief Castro, as well as our own Officer Jim, I forgot your last name, Jim. The Jim was right. No.
Strike two.
Bill, sorry. And during that meeting, we were able to present the concept of the bridge across the LA River to the residents. They seemed very amenable to that, and Rubik Galanian helped discuss some of the details, and that's to-be-determined project, and we're certainly pushing forward with the ultimate intent of creating a quiet zone and a safe crossing for everyone in that region. My next comment is, I'm sorry that our Commissioners from the Status of Women left. So oftentimes, we hear about the challenges that women face in society, both in terms of security, self-defense issues, jobs, the glass ceiling and all that. But I would ask the Commission to take on this request, and that's to explain how it is that women have a much higher life expectancy than men, they have a greater, according to some, social and emotional intelligence, they have a higher pain tolerance, they're better drivers apparently, they have less addiction rates to tobacco, alcohol, and drugs, less incidences of lung cancer, tuberculosis, cirrhosis of the liver, less suicide than the general population, meaning men, less coronary heart disease. And I'm not sure what the answer is to that. Is it genetic? Is it their lifestyle? So Commission on the Status, it's a great, great opportunity to let us know your secret, us men know your secret. How do you do it? Are there general health tips that you can provide the rest of it, or the rest of us, or is this just on that, on that second X chromosome? So when they have the opportunity, they're very busy and very active, but I wouldn't mind looking at some of the positives on the female gender. And of course, that's out there, and I'm sure they'll get the message. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next, Mr.? Go ahead. Okay, you go first, Mr. Sananian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I also attended a tour and then the grand opening of the Brand Library, and I do have to say, it's a beautiful venue, I encourage everyone to go. It pains me to say, go as often as possible, because it's a really nice place, and we should use the venue to its maximum effects, both educationally and for even social occasions if possible. Last Saturday, Walk Bike Glendale had a very unique event. They had a tour of Glendale's bakeries walk on Saturday morning. I was supposed to go, I couldn't go because of family reasons, but what a great idea. Very few people know that Glendale is basically the bakery capital of the US. I mean, the density of bakeries, especially in South Glendale, is really unprecedented. And they had chosen several paths, and they basically walked throughout South Glendale, hitting one bakery after the other. I think it helps highlight both the wealth of culinary attributes that the city has and, at the same time, provides healthy lifestyle, because after you eat, at least you walk. We have, and this is a different item, we're going to unveil, we're literally days away from unveiling our new website, from what I understand, and one thing, it's a very comprehensive sort of change that we're making to both the website, email addresses, and everything. One thing that came to my mind is that Mayor Garcetti, LA's mayor, last week unveiled a budget website, so a website that features LA's budget and every aspect of it, breaks it down and makes it as user-friendly as possible. I think that's a really wonderful idea. It's both educational and it provides transparency of the city's finances, and I would love for us to be able to do something like that. Mr. Ochoa, I don't know if we need some kind of a study as to how much it'll cost us to have something of that sort.
The RFP, I think, gets released either this week or next.
So we're on it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and that's going to be something in the near future. Okay, very well, I look forward to it. Last question is to Mr. Garcia, and I kind of know the answer, but several people have asked, and I want to make sure that they know also. One of our former council members has been convicted of a felony, and the question was whether the city's residents, or the city's on the hook for Mr. Draymond's pension obligations or pension, or are there any pension obligations?
My understanding, I'd have to look at the, I don't know the answer to this specific question. Generally speaking, the vesting period for the PERS pension is five years, and Mr. Draymond was on council for four, so I don't, I'm not sure. I'd have to, that's something I have to look into and get back to you.
Would you please?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, Mr. Caro.
I also attended the Brand Library opening. I want to congratulate the staff. It's really a tremendous, tremendous integration of the old and the new. We've got the art gallery next to it, which will be programmed and used even more than it's been used in the past, but it's really going to become a regional draw, I'm just convinced of that, from artist to music, it's just a real, real home run. I always take people out of towners, I always take them to Brand Library to show them, but now have to get out of the car and walk through the, walk through the interior, it'll be, it'll be worth it. Then the second thing I want to talk about, at the Veterans Coalition meeting, we had a presentation by some of the social service providers that are going to be working with some of the senior vets in a new project that's, will be opening soon, and then also with the Veterans Village Vets when that comes online. And just to let everyone know that the Cypress Senior Living Units, from March 31st to April 14th, there's going to be applications taken, and there are a number of different ways to get your application, Armenian Relief Society, Catholic Charities, Community Development Department here on the City Hall campus. But I think it's six, yeah, six of the apartments are reserved for veterans of the US Armed Forces, and they'll also be selected in the lottery. That's it.
As for me, I seldom make any council comments, but since I probably won't be here next week, I'm just letting you know that by this time tomorrow, I'll be on the beach at Waikiki. This is not a pleasure trip. My mother-in-law died three or four weeks ago, and the funeral will be this week. The clan that started out with my wife and I has now grown to over 40. It's taken time to round them all up around the country and all to descend on Hawaii, so I have to go and give the eulogy on my mother-in-law, and taking the grandkids, we're going to spend a couple extra days. I'll be back on April 1st at 4:30, but I don't think my colleagues want me to rush to get down here for a 6:00 council meeting.
Yeah, we do. Definitely. We're expecting you. I thought you were...
Well, yeah, really. Plus, it's my daughter-in-law's sixth birthday, so I don't know what we'll be doing. She's going to spend most of the day on a plane, so as we're going to explain, most likely, I won't be here next week. That's it. Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, next items are consent items. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right, next, please.
Next item is listed as oral communications, however, as has been the practice of this council, this is a portion reserved for three-minute community event announcements.
And I have no cards.
There is one card.
There is one card. Sharon Townsend. Wondered why you were here.
Mayor Weaver, City Council, and staff. I'm wearing two hats, actually, today. I'm here to invite you to the 14th Annual Taste of Downtown Glendale. It'll be on Wednesday, April 30th. We'll start in the 300 block of Brand and go down to the Americana. I'm very excited about this year, it's bigger and better. We have fully engaged the Americana, we have a lot of new restaurants that are participating this year that haven't in the past, so I encourage you to come. The CV High School will provide music as well as Glendale Community College. We hope to see you there. In addition, I'm wearing my Rotary hat. Like to invite you, Ara, I think you're interested in this, in the Jewel City Fun and Fitness Ride, May 18th at Verdugo Park, and it will benefit Homeethman, Glendale YMCA, and the Glendale Youth Alliance, and we would really like to have some bike marshals, so if you're interested, you can contact me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item, under Adoption of Ordinances, as 78 ordinance adding Chapter 9.22 to Title IX of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 related to public peace and welfare. This was introduced on March 18th, March 18th, 2014 by Councilmember Friedman.
Mr. Friedman.
Who's the item?
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Yes. Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right.
And A1 is the Resolution Admitting Adopted Sea-Wide Feast Schedule for Fiscal Year 2013-14, Establishing Fines for Subsequent Police Response to Loud and Large Parties.
For a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. Mr. Ochoa, you want to explain at this time about 9A, if anybody's here?
Yes, sir. Based on council action earlier tonight, we were asking that the hearing on the conditional vacation of Portion of Los Feliz Road... vacation of Portion Los Feliz Road move to a date certain, 4/29.
Thank you. Now back to 8A.
Do you want to, do you want to do the motion now to continue it?
Oh, you want a motion?
April 29th.
So moved.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, the motion was made by council.
Me.
And seconded by Councilmember Friedman. Councilmembers Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right, now 8A.
8A is Director of Library Arts and Culture regarding library automated control system. A1 is Resolution Approving a One-Year Extension of the Agreement Between Glendale and Pasadena.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa.
Just very briefly, sir, we have a shared system that controls the operation of our library. We, we share it with Pasadena. We are currently working to continue this economy of scale by procuring a new system because the one that we have is old and it's scheduled to be replaced. However, the time it will take to complete the procurement and installation would be another year, so we're asking that we extend the existing contract under the existing terms for a period of one year. Do you have any questions? Cindy Clary can certainly answer those.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Clary? Seeing none, is there a motion? I'll move the item at 8A1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi, and good night, Madam Librarian. Next, please.
8B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding inspection and overhaul of compressors 101A and 101B at the Shoal Canyon landfill gas compression facility. B1 is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing a Three-Year Contract with Vaughan's Industrial Repair Company in the amount of $236,145 plus contingency of $35,422.
Mr. Zernat, is that the one you sent the pictures of?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's actually Unit 9 at the power plant. This is the, the compressor, compressor station that processes the landfill gas for delivery to the power.
That's right, yeah, yeah. Mr. Ochoa, you want to say anything?
Only that, in items like this, where, where we are specifically requesting that we dispense with competitive bid, it's because we actually issued an RFP instead that would allow us to negotiate with bidders to make sure that we don't run the risk of having an incomplete spec. So we did do an RFP. We got three different proposals back. We have determined that Vaughan Industrial Repair with, for the three-year price of $236,145 plus a $35,000 contingency, will take care of the inspection, the reporting, and the overhaul for the compressors. Our staff certainly is on hand if you have any technical questions.
No questions, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi, C, please.
8C is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding HVAC renovations to the C.E. Perkins and Municipal Services Building in connection with specification number 3525. C1 is a Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing a Design-Built Contract with Johnson Controls, Inc. in amount of $1,400,000 plus contingency of $100,000.
Thank you, any questions or a motion?
Just once again, sir, this is, similarly, as a charter city, we're allowed to do design-build for specific types of projects. This one being one where we're looking at our HVAC system in our two buildings here on campus. An RFP was issued. Three firms responded. We've negotiated and we are recommending to Johnson Controls, Inc. for the price of $1.4 million plus $100,000 contingency. Again, staff is here for any specific questions on the project.
Hey, I have no cards. Is there a motion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So why are we dispensing with the competitive bidding process?
Well, I'll let my esteemed colleague answer from the legal perspective because we did go through a competitive process. It just isn't a specific process that our charter dictates.
Right, if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So as Mrs. Zern explained, that the process was competitive. There was, it was an RFP process, it was open to people. The design component of this project, it would be exempt from competitive bidding, but because they're combined, we'd either have to do a competitive bid or where it goes to, where price is the determinant factor versus having RFP process, we're allowed to consider other factors. So there was a competitive process, it just isn't the process that requires it be to lose responsibility bidder. As a result, this process comes before you as a motion to dispense with competitive bidding.
So other than price, what other qualifications did we consider?
Mr. Sananian, members of the council, in this particular case, we had three very competitive bids, two $1.4, one, one was $50,000 less. But in the case of Johnson Controls, the two really critical factors were, were that they had the best design, the lowest cost for us, energy efficiency-wise. And the second thing was, is that when you looked at the distribution of the money in their cost proposal, they were distributing most of their money towards the equipment versus staff services, overhead and profit. So we felt we were getting the absolute best equipment that we possibly can get and that was critical to us. So, so they shaved their, their, their proposal on their end to give us a better product, we felt, and that's why we went with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more questions, is there a motion?
I was gonna say, I have a question. So I know Johnson Controls is dominating the industry and the world. I'm just curious, who else?
We had on this one, Acco and EMCOR, which we both have used, or both of those firms we have used here in Glendale and have been happy with. Good firms. We were very lucky to have three really good bids or proposals. But in this particular case, as I said, Johnson had just this, this edge with, with the equipment they were providing, which is really, really state-of-the-art. We weren't sure we could get that kind of equipment with the estimate we had and we were able to do that. EMCOR and Acco both provide us routine maintenance on our system and we're very happy with the work that they do, but in this particular case, I just think we got the best, the best nod from Johnson Controls.
I'll move the item.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Wintaro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right, and next.
As was stated by the city manager, item 9A has been continued and per your vote. So 9B is Director of, it's a public hearing, Director of Community Development. This was continued from March 4th, 2014 regarding establishment of the Brockmont Park Historic District Overlay Zone. B1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes, I have to recuse myself from this item. I'll be leaving because I live within 500 feet of the proposed district. And I am going to leave for the evening, but I want everyone to know that I will watch at home, so behave yourselves. And I will also watch oral communication, so anyone who's here to speak for oral communications, I will be watching and hearing whatever you have to say. Thank you all and good night.
Good night. Rest assured, we'll take that one. Okay, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Before you is a hearing on the establishment of another historic district overlay zone, this time looking at the 59 single-family properties contained in Brockmont Park as that area of town has been designated. Our planner, Mr. Jay Platt, has a presentation for you. And I'm sure based on the number of folks in the audience, we'll have a good deal of testimony as well. So with that said, Senior Urban Designer, Jay Platt.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a question first?
Sure.
I have a bunch of speakers. Anybody here opposed? That's what I thought. Okay.
I'll open the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
I'll open the public hearing. You're on.
I'll be as brief as you like. I do have a presentation for you tonight. Tonight, you're considering the potential designation of the Brockmont Park Historic District. If designated, this would become the sixth historic district in Glendale. And the applicants have been working toward this evening for over three years. It's been a long, slow process in this case. And I just wanted to introduce you to the proposed district and where we, how we've moved through the process. Here's a map showing our five existing districts, as well as Brockmont Park in the foothills of the Verdugos. We have had a significant amount of community outreach and public hearings during the process. And as you can see in our flow chart, council designation is the final step in the process, of course. To orient you, we're looking at 59 single-family homes north of Kenneth Road, just to the west of, or to the east of Columbus, in the flatlands and just at the foothills along Merriman and Valley View, Lawson Drive and Cumberland Road, close to Arbor Drive. This proposed district has a very interesting history. It's called Brockmont Park because it's based on the estate of John Brockman. You can see John Brockman's house here, which is one of the grandest houses that we have in Glendale. It's still standing and just was designated by Historic Preservation Commission for the Glendale Register. And there is a picture of mean-looking John Brockman, who we also know to have fancied deer. He kept deer on his estate. He had a huge amount of land and created a lake and a park and all sorts of things. So this shows his softer side. And here's a great photo that shows his estate on the left, the clock tower he built that's also a designated building in Glendale. And then the orchards that were at the foot of the hill. And this area is where the bulk of the houses are that you'll be considering tonight for a district. Mr. Brockman was a miner. He made his huge fortune in New Mexico and Arizona, came to Los Angeles, a major businessman in downtown Los Angeles, and basically chose Glendale as his home for retirement. Sadly, like everyone, he dies in 1925. And the family, family pretty much quickly turned over the property and sold off the estate, which ended up being sold to a development company called the Home Realty Corporation that in honor of the name of his house, which he called Brockmont, his, his own mountain, they called Brockmont Park. And here's a view from the hillside down toward the flatlands where the district is proposed. Like a lot of our other foothill historic districts, there's a great wealth of period revival houses. Pretty much all of the different styles are represented. And then the history of this neighborhood's development takes us from 1910, when the Brockman House was built, to 1954, when the last of a series of ranch houses were built on land that was subdivided from the holdings that kind of retained for the Brockman estate. One notable feature of this neighborhood is that, and like with all districts, we're not just looking at a collection of houses, we're looking at a neighborhood. What's interesting here is that several of the streets have very distinctive street trees. So we have these great stands of mature trees that are different from one street to the next, that give the neighborhood a little added character along with the beautiful architecture. One feature, when, when it's called Brockmont Park, you sometimes think developers just name things park just because it sounds good. But in the case of Brockmont Park, they built a private park that was initially designed just for the use of the owners in the neighborhood. We had a lot of trouble trying to figure out where this park was. We found it located in this map from 1928, when the Bartholomew General Plan was presented to the city. And you can see this little bit up here is what was Brockmont Park at the time Brockman, or the neighborhood was subdivided. This whole black spot here is what was recommended for the city to increase its parkland. So even in 1928, we didn't have enough parks. Had that park been turned into a park, we wouldn't be here tonight because all of the houses were, are now built where this park was proposed. So that was a, a pipe dream. Here is the park that was actually built, so we were able to identify it on three of these properties in the proposed district. And remnants of the park still remain on at least one of those properties. So there's kind of a continued heritage there. And someone at the library, our local library, found a bunch of pictures of Brockmont Park, which we hadn't seen in the initial phases of this development. So you can see it was really quite a lovely spot. Of course, most of that's gone now. As I mentioned, the house Brock, Brockmont, as well as the clock tower, are listed on the Glendale Register. And the Brower House on Lawson Place is also on the Glendale Register, just to give some background about some of the historic nature of the neighborhood that's already been recognized by the city. Part of the historic district process, as you know, is to hire a consultant or bring a consultant on board to kind of study the area, give us a history, and then look at the individual properties proposed for the district. And then our historic district ordinance sets several thresholds and levels of criteria for designation. In all cases, the Brockmont Park nomination meets those criteria. There are nine designation criteria. Four of those have been met for its role in city history, its architectural character, the history of its development pattern, as well as its overall sense of place. The historic survey also identified a period of significance from 1910 to 1954. And one of the key things of any district is that properties in a historic district have to contribute to the character of that area, meaning they were built inside the period of significance and they're not completely altered. They may have changes over the years, but those changes haven't destroyed their character. Brockmont Park has 52 out of 59 houses identified as contributors, which is 88%. The ordinance requires 60%, and you should note, that's the highest level of contributors of any of our existing historic districts. The other step in this process that's critical to council is that the second petition that's distributed among residents in the area is asking city council specifically to create the overlay zone to designate the district. So the petition was circulated by proponents. The owners of 35 of the 59 properties have signed the petition, asking that council designate the district. That leads to a 59% buy-in for the district from the, from the neighborhood. And the ordinance requires 50%. So we have met all of the various kind of thresholds and criteria that district requires in Glendale. And we also haven't received any petition opposing the district. We have a formal opposition petition process that did not occur. And then we've, as part of our public meeting series, the final two meetings, the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission, are specifically looking at the entire nomination, looking at all of the public process, looking at the survey and confirming that the requirements have been met. Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Commission both recently voted to recommend that council designate the district, and there was no, no, no opposition at either of those meetings. So with that, I conclude my presentation unless you have questions.
No questions. Okay, I, I, it's beginning, how many of you are here in opposition? So we know what you're gonna say. That's why I'm gonna give you two minutes to tell us that you love the thing. Sorry. My son forgot to turn it off. So I'm gonna let you have two minutes. If you need to speak longer, fine, but I don't think you have too much problem here. So with that, Catherine Jerka, Jerka? That's the way I like. Greg Grammar? Well, you would want to talk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Greg Grammar and I'm the president of the Glendale Historical Society. We're a nonprofit organization with more than 500 individual members dedicated to the preservation of Glendale's architectural heritage. And I'll just be brief. The Glendale Historical Society enthusiastically supports the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission and strongly encourages the city council to vote in favor of making Brockmont Park Glendale's sixth historic district. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Followed by Richard Lebov.
Good evening. I'll try to be as brief as I can. I'm Francesca Smith. I'm the co-applicant with three of my neighbors for this. I'll cut out most of the parts that Jay graciously already presented, meeting all the criteria, how many contributors, how many signatures and so forth. I'm a professional architectural historian. I've been doing this for 28 years. I do this all over the United States. Huge transit and transportation projects, some of them nationwide. But this project is a lot more important to me than any of those have been. When my neighbors and I came up with the idea to do this, it was because we recognized how exceptional our neighborhood was. We didn't really understand how historically significant it was. I had studied John Brockmont when I worked on the Brooks Brothers Building downtown, now Bottega Louis. I did not do the acoustics. Very loud restaurant. Delineating a historic district requires professional expertise. It's art, science, professional judgment, all put into one. Working closely with city staff, we came up with these boundaries. Part of the reason for these boundaries were they were the houses that were the most alike, that shared something, that made it a district. I've had questions about why houses up the hill weren't part of the designated, what we're working on designating. And part of the reason is that those kinds of developments are called contour plans, where the streets are built and the parcels are developed, kind of in reaction to steep of in reaction to steep slopes and grades and canyons and so forth. Brockmont Park is what's called a planned community, where protective covenants required uniform setbacks, open front lawns, uniform street trees that together bring you its pleasing visual unity. They often had sort of gateposts at the entrance of upscale neighborhoods like this. We used to have one. Jay has a photograph in his stuff of that. We used to have gateposts that were part of the Brockmont Estate. I'll skip the reasons that we believe prove are such good case with our 18 people here. This has been a labor of love with my neighbors. We have expended hundreds of hours doing this. The incentive has been historic designation of Brockmont Park and some of the protections it would afford, but we've already received a great return, which has been getting to know each other more and fostering a better sense of community. City staff has been exceptionally helpful through this long effort, and maintaining the character of the historic district would benefit all the residents of Glendale. It makes our city a better place to live and doesn't just benefit historic district homeowners. We ask you all for your support, and we thank you for your service to the community and for this long night.
Thank you. Richard Lebov, followed by Mike MoHill.
Could you ask who's here in favor, maybe?
Everybody.
Okay.
That's why you're getting two minutes, because there's no loyal opposition.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and fellow Glendale Council members. Francesca is obviously a very hard act of hall, and if it wasn't for her very hard efforts over the last three years, we wouldn't be before you this evening. So I want to publicly commend her for responding to this and leading the us into this designation. I am Richard Lebov, a Glendale resident for almost 35 years, and a resident within the proposed Brockmont Park Historic District for the past 12 and a half years. As Jay Platt mentioned, this has been a long and arduous process over the past three years, but well worth the efforts I and my neighbors have expended to be able to bring this before you for your consideration this evening. Having received the unanimous vote, as was already discussed, of the Glendale Historical Commission and the Planning Commission, we ask for your full support next week to make Brockmont Park Historic District Glendale's sixth historic district. Brockmont Park will constitute one of the highest percentages of contributing homes of any district so far designated. With your support, we look forward to commemorating the history, character, style of home, variety of home styles, and the beautiful landscape that we are able to enjoy each day in the Brockmont Park area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike MoHill, followed by Eric VanderWorf.
Good evening, council members and the viewing audience. My name is Mike MoHill. Although I am not a resident of the Brockmont Park Historic District, I am pleased to give my support for this very worthwhile endeavor. Glendale history is very short compared to the cities of the East Coast, and that is why I feel every effort should be made to preserve as many of our historic areas for generations to come. I have a vision. Someday, our little town of Montrose, our little Mayberry USA, our little Americana, that the Montrose Shopping Park District will become the first historic commercial area of Glendale. Back when former Mayor John Draymond was on council, there was talk of having another ADI public housing project behind Starbucks. Using the taxpayers' public parking lot for the developer, the project called for over 200 apartments.
Second, Mr. MoHill.
May we stop the speaker for just a moment? And my only my only rule is a point of order in that the speaker's comments are not related to the introduction of the ordinance of the Brockmont Park Historic District. I would encourage Mr. MoHill to wrap these comments into his five-minute period. We didn't change that, five-minute period at the end of the meeting, because it's not really related, Mr. MoHill.
I'm talking about a historic district, and I have a vision that one day, Montrose.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with this.
This is all tied into the same thing, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
A city attorney, is it not?
Mr. Mayor. Members of council, the discussion, as I have heard so far, is not germane to the discussion whether or not the council should approve or deny the proposed Brockmont Historic District. So those comments should be made germane to that. Again, if you have general comments on what your desire is as relates to Montrose, you're free to speak on that during oral communications.
I only have about 10 seconds left to finish this little part about the historic commercial area.
Give him 10 seconds.
Of course. How can we deny Mr. MoHill?
There you go.
If it's 10 seconds.
Thank you, Councilman Nijarian. When the merchants, residents, and landlords get together at town meetings to discuss the preservation of Mayberry USA, then perhaps future generations can enjoy what those in Montrose have become accustomed to today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric VanderWorf, followed by Lee Smith.
I'm in support of all my neighbors.
Bless you. Lee Smith? Bless you, too.
Yeah, the record should reflect that those two speakers signified their support for the creation of the district.
It's fine.
No opposition, no loyal opposition.
I have some questions.
You have questions or comments?
Questions. This is my first time I'm dealing with this.
Wait, should I close the public hearing first? I'll close the public hearing.
You can close it, yes.
Okay. So this is, just bear with me, this is the first time I'm dealing with the issue of designating a district historic. So just to confirm, this is this is going to be the sixth historical district in Glendale?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the impact? What are those protections that this designation affords as Ms. Francesca Smith stated? Mr. Hahn.
I can start, and Mr. Platt can continue. What happens is that after the the district is designated, the we have a set of general historic guidelines for historic districts. In addition to that, specific guidelines for the specific properties that are that are contributing, and the properties in the future that are not contributing for their development will be established. And according to those, the Historic Preservation Commission will have the review authority over design in in the district.
Okay, so it provides a degree of protection in terms of historical nature, doesn't go as far as the individual homes being designated historic, but sort of somewhere in the middle?
The individual contributing properties will be will be identified as contributing properties to the district, and...
It's not a Mills Act. I mean, it's not, obviously, right?
No, no, no. But however, the projects within the district will have to follow specific guidelines in the future.
Okay. And as I was researching the history of other districts being designated as historic in Glendale, I saw that the the percentage of support was generally higher than the 59 percent that we have here, understanding that 59 is beyond the threshold of the 50 percent that's required. Is that is that correct?
That has been historically the case.
Do we know, like, why it's not 75 as with the other districts? Maybe...
I don't know. I don't know if Mr. Platt has the answer to that.
Platt? She had some mic?
I believe the applicants have some numbers that they could help you with, but in general, we find when you when you go out into a neighborhood and you're going door-to-door, asking people to sign something, in many cases, you'll find people who are philosophically opposed to historic districts, so they're kind of a no from the start. You find a lot of people who aren't home.
Right.
You find a lot of absentee landlords, where we had the buy-in has to come from the owner, not the resident at the property in that case. So it's sometimes hard to reach the absentee owners. A lot of people, one, both, if it's a husband and wife or a partnership owning owning the property, you have to have both signatures on the petition. Sometimes you have a split household, or sometimes it's just hard to find one of the members of the household. And as many times as the proponents go to the door, they're never able to find the people who need to sign it. There could be a variety of reasons.
Isn't there one more reason? Suspicious of signing anything?
That could be very likely, yeah.
Of course, those factors exist with and existed with the other districts also.
Sure.
And I'll tell you why I asked that question specifically. And, you know, I've seen some emails circulate about certain individuals or a certain one individual, certain ethnicity, that apparently moved into the neighborhood, and the allegation in the email, by the way, he wasn't involved in the email chain, was that he was mistreated by the neighbors because of his ethnicity, and so on and so forth. Now, I don't want to name this person, because I see that person sitting in the room, but he's not opposing it, which is, I take it that he's not opposing, so there's no problem. There's no issue. And I don't want to name the person's name, because if he's not, he hasn't submitted a speaking card, then he has nothing to say. So I respect that. I just want to make sure he's not somehow intimidated or anything like that. So here's the opportunity to come up and speak or forever hold your peace, because I'm going to move the item and vote for it.
You're not going to move it?
Or well, for two weeks.
It's an ordinance for an induction.
That's right, yeah. I'll introduce it, so. And I'm not hearing a response, and I guess there's no issue.
Forward we move. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yeah, I have a comment. Very happy that Brockmont residents have decided to do this, and there is a considerable amount of work that takes place, not just at the staff level, but at the neighborhood level, with the meetings and trying to get the signatures. But I think it's a designation that's well-deserved. I wasn't particularly aware of Mr. Brockmont and what he was about, but certainly in driving the streets and knowing the neighborhood quite well, I'm satisfied that this is a great inclusion in our historic district.
Thank you. Mr. Nijarian, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I think it's a a natural historic district. The homes there are exquisitely beautiful and architecturally significant, along with the colorful history of Mr. Brockmont, although the pictures make him look a little bit weird, but he was a miner anyway. And I'm going to go out on a limb and say this is probably one of the nicest neighborhoods that we have for historic architecture.
Miradero's better. I'm a little biased.
He lives over there.
Very, very attractive homes. I'm glad we're preserving the entire neighborhood.
All I can say is, I lived here my entire life, almost 75 years now, and over the decades, I prefer to drive up in those areas, going to Burbank, rather than on the freeways, because I can go slow, observe the beautiful houses in all the different areas. And I know when I was much younger, I was so fearful. Those beautiful houses would be torn down, and junk would be built in our places. So every one of these historic districts come in, I say hallelujah, preserve integrity, because it's, I've had people tell me, they come into Glendale, they go different portions of Glendale, and they're all unique. This whole corridor up there is very unique. There was another one, tell you about, how many of you are familiar with the with the intersection of Harvey Drive and Holly Drive? Where the two freeway is? Well, I used to drive on that before the freeway, and it was a nice little street called Hill Drive off of Glen O'Shea. Go up there and you wind down there, little old houses and trees and stuff. Been nice to preserve it, but they tore it all out and put in the two freeway and, let's see, what's what's the hamburger spot?
In and out.
In and out. That's in its place. So that's progress for you, but it ain't going to happen in your neck of the woods. Like I said, I won't be here next week, but you have...
It's two weeks from now, right?
Two weeks? I'll be here. It's been introduced.
So I I'm introducing item number 9B1.
Thank you all for coming.
Just by way of clarification, just for folks who are puzzled, because Mrs. Friedman has recused, and because you will be absent, and we need the four members...
That's right.
...we're being held over for two weeks as opposed to next week.
Sorry about that, but family comes first. See in two weeks. You don't need to put a card in.
Well, you don't actually have to show up, just watch it on TV. It'll be a 4-0 vote.
It'd be a big shock if it got overturned. Thank you again for coming. Have a nice evening. Getting out at 7:08, not bad. Okay, what is next, please?
Mr. Mayor and Council, next is a full five-minute portion of oral communications. Discussion is limited. Time is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker. There'll be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. However, I would like to take a moment of privilege and introduce one of our staff, who will be making an announcement about an upcoming event prior to the speaker cards.
Who, him?
Yes, sir.
First down. Hi, Dan Bell, Community Relations Coordinator. Promise I will not take the full five minutes, Mr. Mayor, but I do want to take the time to announce this upcoming, this Saturday, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Pacific Park, the 13th Annual Caesar Chavez Event. So we hope the community can come out, and I think, yeah, we have a slide up there. For the folks at home can see the slide. We hope to see you there. We'll have free tacos, beans, and rice for a great food truck out there, free drinks, great music, good entertainers. So we hope to see you all there, Pacific Park, 501 South Pacific Avenue.
I think I'll enjoy the Beach Waikiki more.
Sure you will, sir. Good luck, and sorry about your loss. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Okay, one speaker card, Mike MoHill.
Four minutes and 50 seconds.
Good evening, council members, including Councilman Arne Nijarian. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen in the viewing audience. My name is Mike MoHill. Glendale has Glendale history is very short compared to the cities of the East Coast. That is why I feel very effort should be made to preserve as many of our historic areas for generations to come. I have a vision. Someday, our little town of Montrose, our little Mayberry USA, our little Americana, that the Montrose Shopping Park District will become the first historic commercial area of Glendale. Back when former Mayor John Draymond was on council, there was talk of having another ADI housing project behind Starbucks, using taxpayers' public parking lot for the developer. The project called for over 200 apartments, of which 25 percent would be low-cost housing. When the merchants, the residents, and landlords get together at town meetings to discuss the preservation of Mayberry USA, then perhaps future generations can enjoy what those in Montrose have become accustomed to today. Thank you again. My name is Mike MoHill.
Thank you. I have no more cards. What's next? No new business?
There are no further items. If there's no new business, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Who do we adjourn? Adjourned at 7:11 p.m. Aloha.
Wow.